Guys, six o'clock, let's get the meeting started. Are we online?
Just about two seconds ago.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. The United Republic of America stands one nation, and God invisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, guys, entertain a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor? So we jump right into discussion items. Number A is levy results.
Yeah, so we're just going back over this, that on Friday, our levy was certified, and so it passed. However, the charge was to try and develop a balanced budget, and so we're still discussing budget reductions or potential budget reductions and how we want to go about that. So if there's any, I just want to express how late it was that the levy passed. And yeah, I couldn't be happier with the social world. It passes, it has.
The efforts of the committee. The efforts of the committee. And there's probably a lot of people that are part of that committee. Were commendable and that really helped us, so thanks for supporting foster students.
Absolutely, I know there was a ton of people putting up signs. Knocking on doors, calls, a tremendous amount of effort. I certainly appreciate it. Right, so B will be budget projections.
All right, so this is a kind of a continuation of the discussion that we've got. And we give, we given the board a couple different sheets to look at. One of them had a couple options. And so we projected out what it would look like if the levy did not pass. But then we had reductions if the levy did pass. And then we even brainstormed some other options about potential cuts that perhaps could be deeper. And then some cuts to try and mitigate the impact to certain programs. So a meeting with different board members, kind of what came through is that we recognized that there would be some cuts to some programs, but we didn't want to eliminate any programs. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to cut out all the legs underneath the program. We felt it was, or the different board members had expressed that they wanted programs to exist, maybe not grow, or maybe reduce in size. And so that's kind of the discussion, or how we want to frame that discussion tonight, just to kind of talk about these different priorities and how we can forward with that.
Any questions or comments?
Yep. You have one question on the backside of the sheet that you've given. We have building budgets down at the bottom. Then up at, just above that, we have other that includes building budgets.
So, the building budgets in the other are specific stipends of the, some specific things that we gave them, like UIS and Avid. And that building budgets down below was taking what we'd already, actually what was already cut, because they've already had a pretty significant cut and cutting more. So it was like, we went back later and went, okay, what if we cut some more? The other category is kind of a budget code category that Craig has that has certain specific line items that the buildings get money for, like UIS supports, which is the positive behavior intervention program. So the buildings each got an allocation that they might use to get incentives for students or something for behavior or, you know, student achievement awards, those signs you see in the R's that have stuff.
There was, I apologize for misanswering that. There was, we had an iteration of this or a draft of this that had other as a category.
Yeah.
And so when, when that draft, actually when we were doing it, we were talking about more substantial cuts in staffing. So when you ask me about that, that's where my mind was.
We've done a lot of iterations. We've worked on it for weeks, so I
And this is, this is not a work packet, but we're handed.
That one is not, but it is on the website. We posted it on the website, it's on the levy link. And then when you click on the levy link, you go to the, like, other information, and it's all the way at the very bottom of that page, all the way at the bottom.
Do we ever discuss or determine how much cash or we have in reserves?
We have about 10%, or however is it about 10%. So it's about four million. It's been as high as, I think Craig got it close to about five.
But it won't be at that.
Yeah.
This year.
Is there a projected amount every year?
You know, he always, he always plays it close to the best. And so he never gives us an exact number. I do know that, and I was able to speak with Jason about this today. The state's actually granted more money in enrollment stabilization in the tune of, I want to say around $500,000, if not more. But, so we have that. Craig usually comes in better than, better than what's expected, or he has every year since I've been here. Has that been your experience as well?
It has been, I mean, there might have been a number where some things that's happened, like a roof or something. But for the most part, he, he budgets conservatively. And yeah, we're used, especially the last four or five years, we've been projected to be lower. We always live up a little higher. Something happened, or COVID impacted that. We've had, you know, other things happen. Budgeted money maybe for, I've always worked really hard to be conservative, so I usually have money I could technically get back at the end of the year, depending on what, what kinds of things we were able to do and what it cost us, so.
I knew when it passed, which meant it was under, I got thrown quite a little fit because it had gotten down like in the 5% range multiple times. And I want to say that our discussion was around 8%, I think. And then anytime that he's been, or thought he was going to be, you know, kind of below what the threshold we had said, he'd come say something. It happened a couple times over the years, but it always, you know, if you figured something out at the end of the year, something. And I don't have a number.
In my mind, I thought we projected the end of the year at 3.2, but I could be wrong.
It's 3.4 from last financial.
Okay.
A half a million dollars enrollment stabilization, will that be in the 2021, 22 school year or 22, 23?
22, 23.
And you think that number's going to be higher?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's one-time money. One of the issues I have with one-time dollars is, you know, the funding staff with, with, you know, like SFR funds, I mean, we don't know if that's going to be consistent. You know, I think this type of program, it may not be consistent as with higher. And I think I've stated that plenty of times.
Yeah.
You know, staff that supports using those types of dollars.
No, let's say the, I think we have to be strategic and really question about, is this an ongoing cost or is this a one-time cost? So a one-time cost, I think strategically puts us in a better place for ongoing costs here after years. And when we commit to staff, often if you do that.
There are certainly things that could be done that are one, that are one-time costs, like we talked about some of the projects and things that have been done, or even helping a little extra support for building budgets and things like that. Craig can.
Have you discussed any, uh, cost of early retirement stuff with any of the staff that's been here quite a long time?
I haven't, we have a couple, we have a couple letters in the office that the board can approve. But usually that, you know, the question around that is, is are people financially ready to retire? So if they are, we usually get a letter. If they're not, then, you know, usually people are looking for a reason. They're not ready to retire, or not in the spot. So we, we can, I guess that, a simple answer to that is we can, we can offer that to the union. Usually they would, you know, the consideration there is, anybody who had notified early, we would also, you know, they would also want it for that too. We were going to agree to it now.
Yeah.
I can say from this spread, from the spreadsheet, so in the levy passes scenario, there's five, that'd be five, that represents five, a reduction of five centers. So we're actually partly sitting at six. So, because right now, so we see kinder numbers come out, we have a position and won't fill. So there actually is, if you look at the teachers, as we go across, it says 752, that represents six. The 626 was for five, but we're actually sitting at six right now. And we'll stay there unless we see our kinder numbers come up. If we're actually, that 752 would go over the, into the, if the levy passes.
It's a little closer to 752 than 627.
Yes, sir. Which is a hundred thousand dollars makes a big difference.
Sure. As far as like other staffing, we're utilizing different funding strings for that, you know, categorizing that those.
So like for instance, teachers, this applies to paras also. But we have basic ed funds, that's what this is reflecting, is basic ed funds. But at our board meeting on Wednesday, you'll see some positions that are already posted, and some of those are program funds. So lab titles, special education, migrant, bilinguals. So, so this is only reflective of program, of, of basic ed funding because our program funding, there is no, well, I should say, for me, for my programs, there is no going over budget. You stay within your budget, it is what it is. We know that with special education, we're going over. But that is pretty common in a lot of districts, just because of the needs. So for me, like, I don't budget, I don't, I don't staff something I can't pay for. There's no going into reserves for program staff. So, intervention, instructional coaches, you know, paras, most, almost all of our paras are paid out of one program or another for most of their staff.
What I think you're talking about, you can leverage funds. So say for instance, like CTE, we've been working with Rick Follett to pay for some of the counselors, secretary, staff, just other office staff out of that. And so we can do that with other grant funds as well.
If my last comment that I have is such an extracurricular activities. I am a big proponent of sports and all that stuff, but I think we need to look, try to find other ways to pay for it. Whether we look at speed funds to help supplement it, fundraising, et cetera.
I know that that, the message about fundraising, some of those things was put out to the coaches because I've talked to all the coaches and they were talking about use of funds, you know, for, and really like for the high school, they don't buy all their own uniforms, and they don't necessarily buy equipment, but sometimes if they're, but at the middle school, it's all the same, there's no date, there's no ASV, there's no fundraising, so that's a little bit different. They don't get the fancy stuff done. Sometimes they're wearing the old high school stuff.
Yeah.
I think what I'm getting at is I think there could be more budget reduction in the basic education side of it, that could be supplemented, you know, through, you know, whether it's ASP funds, you know, fundraising, whatever we have to do to help supplement a little bit more of that, because it's still a significant chunk.
Hopefully this proposal wouldn't necessarily produce activities for kids.
Well, I don't think it should. I think, you know, in some ways, it could self, be self-funded. In my opinion.
Have we created a lot of community support, community support that would go for these programs? There might be a way to supplement those activities without many communities funding. I think there's tremendous amount of support.
Well, I think that GoFundMe policy could be part of that as well. So like Missouri Children's Stadium and things like that, I think the community would behind it.
For sure.
So, just as a kind of a point of discussion, what column does the, on this sheet with, which has reductions of levy passes and other options? Which one looks more appealing, or which ones the board thinking about the, as far as resource allocation is concerned? Which one looks more appealing?
You almost have to zigzag down through it.
Yeah, it's probably also a little bit hard for you guys, because in some respects, you might not know exactly what it looks like.
So just for curiosity, safe under credit retrieval? For Plan A, it's 20, for other options, it's 40.
It's, it's so that we can look at funding that through
All different sources.
Different sources, yeah. We're not going to actually cut the program.
No, absolutely not.
We, we need it. But I, we could use some, possibly use some lap funding instead. We already do, but historically, that hasn't been the case. There is some tight rope we have to walk a little bit with supplanted, issue of supplanting. So that, that becomes, that becomes a little challenging, because if we're offering a $20,000 program through basic ed, and also we go, well, we're still going to offer, but now we're going to pay part with Title I. Title I could come and say, wait a minute, you were paying for this with basic ed before, this is the planting. You could pay for it before, you can't just say, no, we're not going to pay for it, and we're going to pay for that with brand. So there's some, some work that's to be done to do that, but I completely agree with that. Yeah.
So we might be able to get a cheaper program that doesn't have all the burdens. We use Red Comet right now.
Yeah, it's not necessarily any more or less expensive than anything else, but it's just, you know, they, they see districts, you, you want to make sure you do things cleanly and follow the rules, so that's.
I have a question about how the credential will work. So, student failed a class, can they take that class again? Would that teacher take the same class with a different teacher? Or do they have to automatically go to?
That often happens.
Okay.
That happens, we especially do not like the idea of students taking math in Red Comet, because it's, they need to be in class, it's really hard, it's, there's a lot of self-directed time in there. So they can, and often do retake the class in, in high school. But that also does lead to challenges with staffing issues for the high school, so, you know, kids are retaking, that's, you know. But Red Comet historically has been used kind of like, at, up until the last couple years, at the tail end, like, oh, we've got these seniors, they need these classes, or these juniors. And we're working to make that, like, don't let kids get credit deficient. If they, if they fail the class as a freshman, try to get that class made up right away, or do the Red Comet this summer, so the kids are on track. Like, don't let them get off track, is once you fail a class, and then you fail another, it becomes like, oh, well, I've just give up. And then if you wait till the end, it amounts to a so big decline, sometimes for those kids, if they failed more than one class. So we're, we're, we started two years ago, a year ago, with, like, if a freshman fails a class, we're going to put them in, in the summer. And so they can start as a sophomore on track to graduate, instead of being behind. So in those cases, sometimes we're saying, you want to make class, we're going to put you in there now, catch up, and start out your sophomore year on track to graduate, instead of being behind. But for the, but they often take the, retake the class at the high school too.
How, whenever we get the student hitting their senior year, and so far behind, they have to do in-class and Red Comet. Is that, is that a failure on the counseling level? Or is someone just not paying it, the student not paying?
I think it's a combination of things, because like, we can't make them come this summer. We can't make them come, but what happens sometimes for seniors is if they do have some credits that haven't made up, like, that becomes like, okay, now I'll do it, you know, okay, I'm going to do it. We have kids doing it during the school day, though, we have kids doing it after school. We, we, we have a lot of options for kids to make up their credits. But no, we, we want them to make it up now. But we also know kids work in the summer, there's things that they'll, they'll choose that, that they can go make money, you know, and so then we have to find a way during the school year. Is, does there need to be work to improve the system? Sure, there does, Brian, I'm sure we can talk more about that, but they're working on improving the system. I, having kids retrieve credit as seniors, unless it's something they just recently failed, is backwards. They need to be doing it when they, when, from the beginning, so that they don't feel behind, and possibly get to a place where they feel like, well, what's up? So that's the goal, is to keep them on, okay, you make a misstep, okay, let's catch up right now, so you're on track.
And is credit retrieval program required by the state to have?
No.
We could. So as Dino was talking about it, so time is a variable, and so in order to get on-track graduation rates up, you have to intensify that in shorter periods of time. So if you can convince a kid to stay like five years, or like, it's all right. But so many times, we have kids who are called to work, like, my family needs extra money, so I'll drop out. Which you don't want, you know, you don't want to be a dropout factor.
Anything else, guys?
No, I think I'm kind of with you on the zigzag approach on this.
I'm kind of putting little stars by the, what I like and what I don't like. And maybe that's what I would suggest at this point.
We will absorb a lot of people through attrition. And so we have, you know, people who decide to retire, and so we won't have to reduce enforcement on this, which is really good. Yeah, and certificates, that's sorry, I should have clarified that. Again, so certificate staff, we won't have. At the teacher level, which I should clarify even more.
The security, how will that? Five dollars? So there won't be a reduction since the levy passed, is that correct?
Yeah, so we shifted that around. And, yeah, so initially, we had, with the levy failed, we had all five, all five security officers reducing force, we're going to eliminate that program. And then after we kind of heard from the board, even that was kind of in question. And so we decided, like, if the levy did pass, maybe we would look at reducing a couple security officers. And then we, you know, we talked to different board members and heard that, like, well, what would it look like if none of them, you know, none of them were cut? And so we, we went back to the drafting board, we drafted that. So what that looks like is, you know, we're investing in our security staff, but we aren't investing as heavily in things like consultants and professional development, so.
The security was very important to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, it's just a resource allocation, right? And where, where you want to spend that dollar.
So on building subs, that's the, one sub for building.
The permanent subs.
And that cost just reflects that extra, they have a little slightly higher pay in the grade. So that's what that reflects that, right? And they would, they would also earn benefits from the start of the year, that amounts as even in that. But all of our subs at some point, if they sub enough, earn benefits at some point.
Yeah, we don't know if that's actually a kind of a cost reduction or cost saving.
Yeah.
Since it's the first year. And since they qualify for benefits after a certain period of time.
The fact that they're here, even if they're not subbing, then they're helping with service or with.
Yeah. The thing for us is that, in some cases, you know, you like to need them all the time, or there's times where they maybe aren't needed right now, they need them, because there's, you know, this time of the year, there, people are trying to use theirs personally, or whatever. But I think the challenge, like, we started out with five, and then right away, people got bobbled up by being used as long-term subs for maternity leaves, or illnesses, or whatever, which is fine. The, the challenge is that some buildings, it's been harder to use them effectively and consistently.
I thought that.
They still sub, they still sub.
Yeah.
Plenty of it.
That was kind of an innovative approach, and we thought it would establish a pipeline to our workforce. So yeah, like I said, I don't, I don't know if it's any cost savings. I mean, on the other hand, if teachers do, we have to pay them at a per-dian rate, or per-hour rate, which is pretty expensive. So for some of our veteran teachers, I think it rivals almost what a, what a sub gets paid for the day.
It's expensive, because it's their per-dian rate, so you take a person at the end of the salary schedule, their hour rate's high.
Yeah, so like.
Sometimes we don't have a choice, there isn't enough subs, so teachers have to cover. So it is, even though it looks, it is, looks like a savings, it maybe, and maybe it'd be something we kept, but maybe it should be a five district subs, and they're assigned.
They just go wherever.
Right, because, yeah, they're assigned, and so maybe, maybe four of the buildings don't need any subs, but Michael needs five. And they all go to one building, instead of just being at a building. Yeah, I mean, so there's, there's other things, you still, it would cost the, that 30,000, but you'd have five that are always yours. Right, I mean, it'd be interesting if Kim looked, if it was there every day, we didn't need five. If there was, probably wasn't very many days.
That's probably what we're looking into.
Especially with COVID and stuff.
Well, I know, the one I know, when, when he was at Houser, for instance, if there was nothing there, he'd go lunchroom or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, now that he's moved to another building, it's long-term, but.
Well, I, I liked it because it was innovative, we're one of the only districts who I think has done it. And then you can actually train these people, so it's not like a teacher stepping out. It's like, you know, you have somebody who's trained and wants to be a teacher and everything like that. So they can actually teach if they have a lesson.
Not, not to mention you get a glimpse of what they're going to be like.
Yeah.
Forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's not costing a ton, seems like that would be still a pretty solid plan. If it is, it is.
That's a better idea. Yeah, because there's times, I think, the idea was that if a building didn't even run, they were supposed to work a different building, but I don't think that legally has happened, like, good. For sure.
What's their education background?
So we grant substitute certificates for people to have teaching degrees, obviously, bachelor's degrees. And we, unless, unless campus change practice, we've granted substitute certificates for people with AAs who are between their AA and their bachelor's, working towards a teaching certificate. But you can give them, you can grant them for anybody with an AA.
So, ones that we have now that are hired, do they all have a bachelor's degree?
All of our subs. I think the building subs that we have do. But I wouldn't say, but all of our subs don't have bachelor's degrees.
And the building subs specifically?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, he, he has.
I think so, but I couldn't tell you for sure.
I know yours does. There's those, who's your building sub, Brian?
Starting out in San Antonio.
I know, I don't know if you have one.
No, we still.
Yeah, I think all our building subs do, but I don't know. Because they've changed. No, Tanner has, Tanner is intervention.
And they have an AA, are they actively in school getting their BA? Or is it, can they like take a semester off and just go?
Well, if they did, we wouldn't necessarily know, because we're not checking up on them. So they, the ones that we have so far anyway, are ones that are working on it. How fast that, our school, that might be depends. We have some paras that are, also have their AAs that are wanting to be teachers. We've gotten sub certificates for them, and they usually are really good subs. We have to be a little bit creative, honestly, because it's challenging to find some. But Kim could probably do like a list for us.
But right now, you have the, each building has. So each building has a sub assigned, but if we went to five district, categorized districts up. Then they could float to any of the buildings that needed.
Are you thinking about that?
Yeah, the the thought was that um, we have people that wanted elementary subs and people that wanted to be second. And um. Usually every building needs a sub.
Right.
And so we, we let the buildings kind of have have control of that. Um, we could take that back and just say, you'll report to the district office and we'll deploy you and be ready to sub any type of classroom.
Well, everybody's initial.
We also could. We can also, we can also cuddle even building subs. Actually, it's our, our union actually brought it back. It was, this was one of their ideas and they, they thought it wasn't working as well as. We had planned, they brought it, brought it back and said, I don't know if this is working like the plan. But maybe potentially they could still be a building sub up with an assignment through the sub person versus like. Like, you know, because what's happened, I think has happened is people put in for a subs. And the building subs not like going in taking some jobs, the building's assigning that. So if they're, it's maybe changing process because. Sometimes you're getting subs from outside of the building, so it isn't something because they just went on ASAP like they're supposed to. As and put in that they're gonna be gone and a different sub shows up, so I don't know, maybe just a process. Brian Bailey, raising his hand so nicely.
All right, Lucas Morris is our sub.
Yes, Lucas. He has a bachelor's.
He does have a bachelor's degree, but I think what's happening is, yes, people will take those subs if they're ahead of time, they put it in ASAP ahead of time and other subs will take that.
But in the morning.
But if it's an early morning sub that oftentimes doesn't get picked up, that's when our rubbing sub coverage is better.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's surprising to me to hear that they think that's not working because he is busy every single day. And in fact, uh, throughout the district, if somebody doesn't have coverage, we email each other and text each other to have your, is your rubbing sub being used? And they're always being used.
So.
It's curious because it is something that Brett brought to that night of the day.
But for the most part, they're always being used.
Yeah, I'm I'm with you. I would, I would like to survey them and say, how many free periods have you had on where you just didn't have anything to do? And I I bet you, I bet you all of them say, I've been from bell to bell, it's it's on.
Well, we don't even have to give them a prep year either, so that actually.
But, yeah, so we, we can provide more information. Um, I, um, yeah. I don't know. I I do think it's innovative. I do think it, there's a lot of, there's a lot of pros or cons. Get into education or even come back and serve, serve the district. And so that, I mean, there's, there's potential there too where you can grow them and so they have kind of uh. Expertise or pedagogical practices that they can go into classroom and teach kids. And the kids are familiar with them, so, yeah, but, yeah, if the, if the board desires to cut it, we can eliminate it and. And uh, think about something else.
Sounds like us we're looking at.
There's nothing under multiple for cuts. Maintenance repair, people, we talked about eliminating employees driving school district vehicles home.
So there potentially could be a cut there, we just haven't captured what that would be. I'm certain there would be a cut there, but that happens like the day after you move.
Great.
Do you know, stand out?
So the process moving forward, I mean, like, you know, we keep looking at these sheets over and over again. So eventually we get to come to some kind of conclusion. So uh, do we want to have, I know we kind of talked about its exact approach to this. I don't know the best way to do that and have it legible, so. I guess I'm looking for a process that we can take these sheets and actually put it to plan. Or give you, you know, get, have you guys have enough direction?
Do you feel like you have enough information in that?
Well, you won't be able to read my hand, right?
No, but I mean, like, as I know that in some areas it's hard to, like, you look at, you know, what is that really? Like, what does that really represent or how, you know? And so, right, so beh- so behind the scenes, um, we've worked on what the, because. Having six people through attrition or whatever is one thing, but they aren't necessarily in the right positions to make that work as far as buildings go. So there's some moves that have to happen or reassignments have to happen. Um, the same thing with some of the other areas. So there's some, some of the whole staffing moves that have to happen. Which will need to be done, probably that, our goal is the first week of June. So people know what their assignment is for next year. Normally, we give assignments the last day of school. But if someone's move has to move or move a building, that's not gonna work. They need to know before that, so.
So we won't have to lay anybody off, because there probably will be involuntary transfers.
Yeah.
Which sometimes don't go well. Like people have, it sounds crazy, but their, their room becomes almost part of who they are and their identity, so. For instance, if, if I'm in a brand new classroom at the high school, and this is no offense to the middle school. So if I'm in a brand new classroom and that teacher's selected and we say. Sorry, we know that you really love the high school, now you're at the middle school, be like, well, why, why me? Why, why that? And so. Yeah, sometimes those are just.
That's what I say every time I go to the middle school, why me?
You would think it would go well because, you know, the, the other option would be like, well, we could have reduced enforcement. But that, sometimes that uh, both things don't really go well.
Well, and sometimes too, based on people's qualifications and certifications, we can't necessarily just go to the bottom of the list and say, oh, you. Because it doesn't work. Um, if the, the last teacher we hired was a high school science teacher, but are opening second grade, they can't teach second grade. So there's some of those things happen, and that's where you'll get, sometimes you get someone maybe that has some more seniority, but we still try. To do in the way that we do, do things, of course, in the way that meets the contract, but is fair and meets the needs of our students. So that's challenging. So there will be, there will, you know, we still have, we do have some reductions to make. We'll finalize those, the classified ones when Craig gets back from his trip. But we, you know, so that will be coming and there will be people that are. We understand, but they'll have jobs, so.
So the classified staff will also.
There'll be some classifieds.
Will be moving in the.
Well, depending on which, which things we settle on here, obviously.
Yeah.
Because if we, yeah.
There will be, there will be some cuts to um, staffing units, be it outright. That we say we're gonna lay some people off, or if we say that staffing model at your building looks different because we have. Let's say, for instance, two secretaries retired, and so the configuration may actually look different. We may, we may rely more heavily on, say, like office assistants, or even, even student, uh, student aides, office aides, now to let. But the, you know, our main priority is to let people know as soon as we can, and then if, if we lay them off, give them as positive of a recommendation as we can. And then if there's a position that comes open, obviously consider them in.
The other thing for us waiting to is, so. You know, we, we work on these things and we try to, we try to be really careful and thoughtful. And literally, we're working on, the other day, they're working on some, some moves and we could get word potentially of our estimation. We don't have it yet, but that completely changes what we just planned. So um. So we're trying to hold off too because we don't want to go and make moves and then, oh geez, someone retired from, you know, this grade and we, we moved someone and we. Didn't even have to, and then they have to go back. It's traumatic for the people, it's traumatic, yeah, so.
So.
So our favorite words.
There weren't hardly eighty or no retirements listed for the board packet on Wednesday.
No, there's one that Matt.
I've been hearing about retirement, but yeah.
Though what, most of them already happened, the ones that were, but we had very few this year. And some of the positions that we've had, like, we have a couple of teachers that are gonna stay home with their kids. And we have another teacher, or a speech person, she's moved, you know, so there's some of those, and like, we have to replace speech if we can't. Doesn't matter if the very last person on the list is seniority, we have to replace it, so. Um, and like I said, Matt, I know has at least one, maybe two people that um, that can, that just aren't on the board packet yet, but will be. So what, could there be some others? I don't know, you know, we hear stories about, well, so and so said, well, if this is the youngest newest teacher, if that person got cut, then I'm gonna go ahead and retire. So there's people that, you know. That would do things that, but now that it's passed, I would think if people resign, but I've had teachers. They walked out the last day, stuck the letter under the door and I never saw them again because they retired. I, Carrie Bell, she retired that way. She actually was in the building till about the end of June. Well, she was working away in her room, well, she just didn't want fanfare. She didn't want any attention. She did not want a party show or anything, so she put that under my door. And and she retired, and so it happens, you know, some people aren't looking for to get noticed for those things. Never know.
So I guess my question is, you know, we looked at these sheets or the ones in the packet, are you saying that we need to hold off?
No, what I'm saying is, we would hold off to notify people just because if somebody else resigned or somebody else retired.
At the same time.
But not from that.
Direction.
Yes, yes.
How to configure the budget for next year, and then if there are non-teacher certificate staff, we need to let them know by the thirteenth.
Well, if you send me this in an Excel box, then I'll.
I'll send it to you.
I'll give you my.
I didn't bring my computer, but I'll send it. I can actually send, it's, if you guys want to make notes on there and give me your notes, it's fine.
Or, yeah, no. If, if you want to, we can get it to you, and then uh, if you want to adjust budgets. And say, this is what I'm thinking and these are the cuts, or I would like to see more cut here.
We can try.
We're all, we're all, I mean, the budget, the budget is the board's prime, one of their primary responsibilities. And so, you know, however you want to configure it, we'll go with.
Do you mind if I go line by line tonight?
Um. I, either, yeah, I guess if uh.
If you, if you definitely can tell us, yeah, let's go.
Push out things we're not sure of, but I think, I mean, I have some that.
Yeah, if you know, we can, we can check those, say, let's go with.
Okay, so number one superintendent, that's seventy-five thousand, that's for consultant.
Yeah.
Say we get rid of that, same with next line consultant.
Can we do one in a timing series, everybody agrees?
I would ask, uh.
I'm gonna be able to take all those notes in this little piece of paper.
You've got consultants, uh, school improvement, and pivot, I, I know you mentioned, sorry to ask again, what's pivot?
Valued of software.
Yeah.
What are the costs on the S I P tools and the pivot?
So. Yeah, the SIP tool um, with, it's with unlimited consulting, it's like twenty thousand dollars.
What's unlimited consulting?
Unlimited.
Well.
What's with limited?
There's other options that are much less, like, we would still have to buy something there, but maybe we would use like In the Star Witch for all of our buildings is.
Yeah.
Five, five, six thousand, there's some other options.
The immediate thing that it addressed was, when I, when I got the job here, the question was. How are we using data to inform decision making? And at that time, it was very limited. Right? And so, are we, are we considering data in our planning, especially with like school improvement? And so when that's not being used, there's a huge concern, like, are we shooting from here? How's that? And so this tool actually took. Uh, took all the data from like Sparta Balance Assessment, put that together, did some poverty regressions, things like this that principals could look at. Then asked them to set goals and it actually would feed into their evaluation, that you can monitor. And so uh, yeah, that was one of the things that it impressed. As well as uh, we were able to consult with. Okay, he works for Adam Travis Schuh Houser. With him, so we'd have to find something different, and so with our consultants as far, and with. With some of these moves, uh, we'll have to rethink staff development, professional development throughout the district. And um, how we're gonna grow as a district. I know that some of you looked at the, the outcomes and said, Proser can do better, this is unacceptable. Um, but the question is like, so how, what does that look like? How do we do that? Right? Or or what do we need in order to improve our educational outcomes?
Um, on the, I know we had a review of the school improvement plans, I think it was December, but somewhere in there, are we gonna have another review?
We usually, we usually do that in the fall because that we won't have data for some of the data measures that they're using till after school's out. So we do that in the fall, once we have all the data.
So December, so December was the first time we used this?
No.
No.
Okay.
The first time, that was for this, just this year.
Yeah, they have to be approved yearly.
Yeah, we do it every.
And so every summer you get, you'll get data back and you can say, all right, we either met our goals or we did beat our goals. This year is kind of um, an outlier in the effect that students tested at the beginning of the year, and then students are gonna test at the end of the year. And so you'll be, you'll be able to see the impact of instructional leadership, principal leadership, uh, staff development within that year. To say either the kids gained or the kids lost, so.
So, but it'll come before December then, right?
Yes, it'll come back this summer.
Yeah, no, well, you think December, right, but December was the restart of this year, so like their plans are due October thirtieth and then we'll present them, so.
We'll see the outcome early fall.
Yes, yes, and some of it we would have sooner, but we present all of them at the same time, so. But sooner means like the last week of school, maybe, if we're lucky, so. Okay, so if we go on the first one, I was gonna make notes because I have the spreadsheet late. Hey, um, superintendent, so um, the seventy-five thousand, is that what we're aiming for?
I don't know, I, I'd like to see the S I P tools or whatever.
I believe there'll be some offset there with the SIP tools and uh, maybe. I I need to find out, but I think it'd be actually more like sixty-seven thousand, because I think it's still gonna cost us a little money, so it's not gonna cost us as much. If we use of the tool called In the Sub.
But is it as good or close?
It actually is very good. Um, and I've used it for years. Michael had used it when I was the teacher, Kevin.
Did you use it?
Yeah.
Is it different?
It's very, it's similar in what you do, you put in your goals, you're saying.
If.
I thought it was easier to use, but.
The struggle with it will be taking these plans that our principals have spent a lot of time inputting. Then taking those and saying, all right, all that work that you did. You know, like, catch a sketch, forget about it, now input it in a different tool, so there will be a lot of time spent putting it, putting it into this.
I don't know if I'd be in favor of doing that now, uh, considering what we saw in December. Quantify the metric from December. To what the, what finished out the year and what's happening, you know, the next year, so I'm.
I know, you can ask them, is that an issue? As far as them being able to look at their data from before and now, that's.
No, I'm, I'm saying for us.
Oh.
Because we saw one in December and it.
Yeah, but did you guys actually show the tool or you just showed your plan? They, that wasn't the, that was.
We showed, it was the entire report, I don't know, it was enormously big.
It'll be that big, it'll be big.
So what I don't want to see is, I don't want to look back at the S I P plan from last year and then comparing it to a different program.
When they come in the fall, they'll bring you the data from the beginning of this year and the end of this year.
I know, but I'm, I'm saying about using a different tool, a different program. Yeah, I wanna, I don't want to compare apples to apples, yeah, exactly, I wouldn't compare the same tool. Just be able to look at last year's and go, okay, this, I'm jiving, and I, I don't know anything about this other program, but.
What do you guys think? Is it worth the extra money spent to stick with it or?
Yeah.
Um, I think there are programs out there that um, kind of addresses, but there are constantly.
I mean, if, if what we have is.
I don't know about price, but I think what we're all after is a, a tool that we can put our goals in and monitor that with data. Not, not just SBA data, because SBA data is too late, the year's over with. Um, but to monitor, monitor that over the year. So yes, I think some money needs to be allocated for some type of tool. But I think we can find a better tool to do that. But I think we can find a better tool to do that.
Yeah, it, it's all in what you're in the market for, so, um, this was one that I was familiar with. Uh, another one would be homeroom. Um, another one is Deanna talked about would be In The Star.
Yeah, I'm not saying that's the best one.
Yeah, and the, some of them are more clunky than others, but.
So no matter which way it goes, we're still gonna end up.
How about this? How about I do some research and bring, and work with the principals and bring it back, and so you can see what the options are, I think that's, yeah. It's still gonna cost some money, so I do think that this seventy-five thousand is not quite seventy-five thousand, but I don't think it's twenty thousand.
All my point was, is if we, we have to spend three quarters as much anyway.
Yeah.
If it's not as good a product, we might as well stick with what we got. And if, if, if it's not worth the extra money, then let's push off and do what we actually need.
I, I think we've had some struggles with it.
Yeah.
I think it could be more, work better for the, I think we could find some options that might be better.
Yeah, let's start looking.
Okay, so the seventy-five thousand is the other column, right? That's the, the consultant's SIP tools and pivot, but there's probably some, maybe we'd say that's sixty-five because of the change in the tool. Ryan is in the background today.
I told Sean that.
That's a little ways start.
I struggle sometimes, uh, when we try to compare things. Uh, she's already doing her part and trying to make cuts for the tech department and has said that we're gonna cut Canvas. Um, Canvas to me at the high school is a direct impact on students, many, many of our teachers use Canvas. And I really struggle to say we're gonna cut that platform and yet still pay this amount of money for an S I P tool. That, in all reality, it does impact, it does have connections. But to me, Canvas is, that's what kids and teachers are using. And so that's where one of my struggles comes.
Using for, explain.
It's a, the L M S platform, so we, it's a learning platform, so now that we're one-to-one computers, our kids and teachers, so many of them are using Canvas as their L M S platform and putting all of their assignments on that, so the kids go home, they have that computer access in the class available to them right there. Well, we're in our efforts to try and save money, we're cutting that. There are other systems, but that's my. There are other systems, my point is, is that that's the same feel to me, is we're cutting something that we currently use at the ground level with students and technology, and this feels like the same thing for admin.
So you want to keep the tool we have?
I don't know, I don't think we should. I have a hard time keeping the tool.
No, we have to have a tool, we have to have a school improvement planning tool, that's.
Yeah, I just, I, I have a hard time keeping a tool when I'm telling the teachers to bag theirs.
Well, initially we had all that slated to, I think all of it slated to cut, uh, as well as, as well as Canvas. Yeah, they. I think that when we're, yeah, when we're, when we're talking about some of these things, I, I know that there are gonna be different priorities, even when we get to staffing. As far as, you know, you're cutting a secretary's mine, how's my building supposed to function? You're cutting my budget, right? Um, and so, that's really the nature of, of the beast here, that people are gonna be unhappy. You know, I, in my heart of hearts, really believe in school improvement planning and I really believe in our job, our job is, is, you know, the district is to have our students leave with the very best education possible, the very best teaching possible. And so I believe you do that through professional development, not necessarily through a lot of other things. But in eliminating that, like, I'm gonna have to go back to the drawing board with Deanna, right, and we're gonna have to talk about, so what is recrafting staff development look like? What is re, recrafting school improvement look like? Right? And is it better, is it better to do a homemade version versus go out and buy, buy a program? And so that was the initial thought there, is that if we eliminate everything, then we'll have to go back to the drafting board, but we can come up with a homemade version, right? And not the other programs weren't gonna experience cuts, right? We, we are gonna run a tight ship, like, that's, that's what the command is. But, um, yeah, I, yeah, it's, it's gonna be tough, um, so, I mean, there are gonna be programs, just like we talked about. People are gonna be asked to move buildings and you'll hear about it as.
So honestly, though, the SIP costs that Matt has listed there actually would all be cut because the majority of the cost of the SIP tool comes out of my budget. Out of Title One, because it's Title One Plan, we have to do it for Title One. So I actually think that seventy-five thousand is correct, because that was the overage that wasn't in Title One. So I think that numbers.
So you can pay for the.
I already do pay for part of it, a part of it, but it's expensive, if we find something that works well and, um, I think we can, that's not as expensive. And would work really well for the principals.
So we can take the whole seventy-five?
I think it can all be off, yeah, because I, we pay for part of it out of Title One. I just remembered that, so.
Mine one?
I, God, I hope so, okay. The, my office, so we originally said ten thousand dollars for consultants, we didn't even use that ten thousand dollars this year. And then I just added the extra ten because we could reduce in some of our operating costs and stuff, so that's what the twenty thousand is. There's no reason to not cut that, so.
Can I go back to the top one for a second?
No.
Just to make sure. So we, we are gonna have a student, a school improvement program.
Yes.
Through Title One.
Yes.
And we, can you do pivot through the same program?
No.
It's gotta come out of, okay. Um, and I don't see why we couldn't keep that at least for the time.
Yeah. And pivot, and pivot isn't super expensive either, and that would be a transition. People are really used to that, that means we have to retrain our staff and our principals.
Okay.
So that's, I think it's seven or eight thousand, if we don't cut that, that would be great, but if we have to, we will. So you, uh, people wanna keep it, it pivot, less impact, negative impact on staff and teachers? Okay, I got it.
So, so when we, we are talking consultant, does that, does that mean every consultant we have, where we can?
Yeah, uh, instructional consultants, so are technically like our lawyer. If we use the term consultant loosely, our district legal counsel. I mean, that's, that's basically what we're talking about, like, we don't have expertise and so we're paying somebody for their expertise, right? Um, to, to guide us. And so, yeah, particularly our instructional consultants would go. And so, it'd be the equivalent of like, say, a business cutting research and development out of their budget. It can survive, but you may not see the gains that you, you want.
But there still could be times where we'd have someone come in or we contract with someone, for instance. I don't know if you guys would call them a consultant, but under the definition, like I'm working with Jessica Wallace to bring in more training for cell. That will be a contract, that will come in, you know, I'm meeting with her next, this week or next week, um, because we're looking, we're required to provide another day of cell for our staff before school starts. So when you say consultants up there, it, we really can't say, like Matt said, with a broad brush, we're not having anybody. And we do hire people too, sometimes with program, um, where we have some specific, like someone on E S D with a specific, even bilingual or something like that. So it's, it isn't everybody, it can't be.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, because I know.
It can't be.
Classes, they make updates on stuff, it's cheaper to bring somebody in.
It is, usually.
Yeah, the, so their clock hours and things like that are all under their kind of professional responsibility, sometimes we offer them in district.
I, there are times we'll need a professionals developer to, we will, we will need professional developers to come work sometimes, it's just that there's nobody in our district that can provide the social emotional learning training that our staff needs. We don't have anybody necessarily qualified to do that.
But it'll come from basic.
Um, the cell, no, we, well, this teacher pay doesn't. Um, and I think last year I actually paid for her out of Title Four, so I would probably pay for out of Title Four again.
But what, yeah, I guess. So I think what we wanna do, and this is like all encompassing, is try and stay away from them if we can. And so, um, I mean, the, this is, at one time we had discussed, uh, a mental health counselor. Um, it's, it's not in the budget, it probably based upon our budgetary situation, it won't be in budget. Um, and then that's a consultant too. Um, so trying to, trying to move away from those and look at, like I said, recrafting our own practices and offering stuff within our district. So.
I wouldn't even go so far as to say planning ahead for any of the trainings like that to run past the board ahead of time.
We can. Yeah, that's.
Some weeks or weeks ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I know that we ended up, you know, that was one of the pinches where, um, the staff development with, you know, we did online learning modules, um, about diversity, equity and inclusion. And there were some questions about that. So yeah, we'll work to keep them for.
We'll have to do next year, not this coming year, but the year after next.
I wish you'd simply check back to the state, told them to keep it.
Can we go on to line number two?
Yes.
Okay, so the twenty thousand that we have in the other, I don't know why we would, we would just do that, that makes sense, I think. I, like I said, that ten thousand is budgeted for consultants in case there's something we need, but we have, this year we have a new system. Um, the district office support, I think the amount in that we have the forty thousand is accounted for and some staffing changes with like how great position is then. Um, I know that they're doing, we're having interviews for those that position tomorrow. I don't know if there's anything else there. Sense to do that, so we're not cutting a person. No, it would be really hard to cut a person, we talked about that originally a bit. Yeah, anyway, library para. Now that's been the same across the board, that would be sharing, so para at the secondary. The secondary. It's really hard, guys, to talk about this stuff with these people.
I know, but I think if we're talking about the cuts, I mean.
It's on there, it's obvious. And I think necessarily even their paras, because, yeah, that would be reduced, but it is reducing one paras. At the secondary, they do book checkout, manage the library. At the elementary, they teach lessons under the direction of librarian, it is planned time, it is not planned time at the secondary. I do have an email from our librarians, um, pleading to not have the pet.
Who, so who, does that mean the library would be closed?
No, teachers can check out books, I mean, you can still have the library open. Um, that'd be something the buildings would have to sort through on how they manage them. But teachers check out books now if there wasn't somebody at the library.
I mean, I'm talking like a student, I mean, like, if he comes in on, in between classes.
There probably wouldn't be, there wouldn't be that.
It'd be locked, the door would be locked.
There wouldn't be anybody here, so.
Unless a teacher, there wouldn't be supervision in here. So unless a teacher brought their class into it and they chose to supervise their class, then it would probably be closed.
But as far as a student coming up trying to, I don't know, they probably don't do research with books as like they used to, but.
Yeah.
But I mean, technically, that, this building would be locked.
Yeah, you could stop, so. You could stop it, so it was open before school, at lunch and after school for a little bit. And give somebody a stipend to do that, so a couple thousand dollars for a teacher to, um, provide that. That might be something that we can talk to that you need about.
Oh, this is the library during the day, like, for school, after school, during school, I would think that kids come in here and do homework and do, like, have the study rooms.
We have kids in here every single period of the day.
The middle school, they're very, kids consistently visit the library through their homeschool classes, and I don't know that they do that in high school, but some maybe do that. So in the high, like in the middle school, kids every week they go to the library, I don't know if they do that in high school, but they use a lot for projects and research.
So what you're saying is it would be locked except for before school and lunch and.
Uh, we have key card entry, yes, if there's nobody here, it would end up being locked. Teachers could bring their classes down and do that, but it would eliminate, um, open time for, and I mean, there's other, there's so many other things that, that go on too, and we have, we talked about the credit recovery program and sometimes on the credit recovery that time, there are students in here working on credit recovery, so that eliminates that, could potentially eliminate that as well. And, but we, it's so hard, we use this. So listen, we use this every semester.
So a direct student impact.
I'd like to skip this one.
I think the next one that has an amount in it, um, under levy and other options is secretaries and office assistants and then this would be reducing positions. Um, impact students and staff obviously, but it's not direct instructional services.
How would that affect the actual service at the building?
Um, impact health room to some extent, um, everybody in every building, so any office assistant or secretary has jobs and assignments, so other people have to pick those off. Um, we've increased some off, the office staff over the years. Over, well, I've been there a long time, so I guess, of course, it's increased over time. We used to have a lot more students with less office people, but it's, eh, there's a lot of need, there's a lot of health need regardless of COVID. Um, especially at the secondary, our nurses would say that they would, like, people think, oh, you need to help, it was just elementary all the time, they would say, no, you need them at the secondary. The health conditions get so much more serious as kids get older. Um, so yeah, it would, it would mean, um, the people in the offices taking on responsibilities that are shared with others now.
Please get that one.
Um.
I have a question on the elementary counselor, even though I know it's not in here.
Yeah.
Um. What, what elementary is that, well, I don't know if you wanna go that far, but.
The elementary share, would have to share to counselors, but.
Each one has one at this point.
They do, um, and based on the funding, the new updated funding, plus the amount, the amount that accounts for our social workers, that we get a little amount there. We're pretty close to what we have for counselors now. We're not completely one hundred percent funded through the state, but we're, we're getting close. Um, we have eight and I think we're in the sevens there, so. That one is, uh, when we did this originally, we didn't have that extra funding. That, that we definitely were not above seven, but we, we could be getting close there. That one's a tough one, for sure. That's why we took it out if the levy were to pass.
Yeah, I just had the questions.
Yeah. Fair educators, um, all of our fair educators are funded with program funds, except one in the district. Not counting the library assistants. So except one in the district, and that was a position last year we weren't gonna fill, and when they did fill, so that's, that position, that person would be reassigned. But knowing anybody we cut in the fair educators unless someone quits or resigns or retires, we are gonna have to make some actual people reductions there. I think on this list, if we did everything that was on here, maybe four people. We don't, we don't have to tell me about that one yet, we can come, we can come back to it. The teachers make that seven fifty-two because it is the seven fifty-two we are at that right now. And there's no reason to change that at this point.
You still, oh, no.
Yeah, because, yeah, we, we are actually funding that with S S R's, we would continue to do that for another year.
So we would, we're okay with this?
That, reducing that. That, reducing that person right now, if we paid with Esser this year, and we actually put her on because of all those demands. It doesn't make sense to reduce that now. But we could.
But. We haven't known.
Well, if you consider, you know, and we'll see what happens in the fall, but the whole surge, the fall surge and all that that's expected, we'd be doing a lot of testing again. I hope not, but. But we offer, we offer now, if anybody needs a test, they can go get a test, so. Um, they can come, make an appointment, come get a test. So we want to still be able to offer those services, but if we had less people, that would make that harder for us to do. Extracurricular.
Like I said before, I think you could increase that and help. And go, um, fund it.
Somewhere.
Through ASB, uh, you know, whether it's the GoFundMe or. And I, I really think the, the kids need to get on the numbers, you know, and work for a little bit of what they possibly want.
What, um. How much would you like to increase if I were to think about a hundred thousand dollars or?
You know, that might be a good starting point.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I really don't know. It's. I'm not saying eliminating it, but just finding different funding mechanisms.
Yeah, yeah, we can, um, we can start to work with. People who receive the ASB to say. This percentage of, say, like your coach's salary, all extracurriculars be taken out of ASB. And work with the student body on that.
So I understand, so instead of being a hundred ninety-three-nine, it'll be two hundred ninety-three-nine. I mean, so.
Except for that's a really odd, awkward number.
So do two ninety-four.
Two fifty. Or do the. Two seventy-five, oh, three.
Well, I'm not sure that we, we, we'll try to get to either, we'll try to get as far as we can. How about that? Let's do the best we can.
When, when we were looking at the levy bill and that, of it, and clubs, what is one that really. Got me bad, of course, I love that, athletics like everybody else, but. But we have kids that come to school because of that. We have kids that hold the reins and have to do the cold sports.
Well, I'd be willing to say that probably. Twenty percent of the kids on the sideline, the only reason they pass anything is so they can go play.
Right.
Well, we have, I mean.
I had one of those.
We, I, there's definitely some, probably some of few small reductions we can make that would impact programming. But again, middle school kids don't have the access to do the fundraising, so that's gonna be a challenge, and high school kids. Um, and they don't have gate, there's no gate, and gate's a big deal, so.
Wouldn't you guys do, I know that magazines aren't. The hot thing.
We don't sell magazines.
Wouldn't you guys do the magazines, stop doing magazines, right?
Oh, like. Magazines have been over for a while now.
Well, my sister's reading it last year, I remember like fifteen years.
So men's school doesn't like get gates for basketball games?
No, there's no, that's not allowed in there.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and, and so middle school kids had, or at least women's school had ASB as well.
I think they still do.
And, uh, yeah, so, so that was, you got a little bit off of the, um. The gate at the high school events, and, uh, so, yeah, we can, we can charge parents. The other one on there, and this is, uh, this is on the cut now sheet or do now sheet, would be to charge Patterson a fee for their student's participation. But I, I do think. We talked about cutting athletics, you know, deeper cuts, a lot to do away with it. But, you know, we have. You know well what athletics means to kid. You, you played baseball, you were in band, right? And so that really, I think, galvanizes or really pushes a kid to engage in school in a lot of different ways, and so. Even though it doesn't correlate directly to educational outcomes, we know that. It's, you know, a motivation for kids to show up, so I, I think it's important. Um, none of the, I don't think that any of the. Cuts it, uh, will make, will impact the success of the athletics, it would just cause us to focus on like fundraising and. Be more conscientious about work funds coming up.
The other thing we talked about, and I, I think this actually is a good idea, and it's actually something we could probably extend to. Like middle, even middle school nurses. We don't charge gate, but we, we pay people to run gates, and we pay people to score keep. Are their parents that could take on those roles to earn money for their kids' programs. And I'll be the scorekeeper. For the games, so that when my kid's playing and that money goes into the ASB, instead of just being salary now, you know, that's taking from, sometimes people are earning some extra money, especially at some of our fairs. But I think we used to pay, like, lines club or different groups to come in and, like, take the door gate. We talked about doing that with clubs instead with parents. So that. The programs could earn that money into their program. So just some ideas. Okay. The building subs we had.
Well, we were gonna, we were gonna look at.
Well, I mean, even on here, I think we, oh, we had, oh, no, but still on it.
Yes.
Um, but let's look into that one. Okay. Security. Everybody else?
Yes, absolutely. What happened last week, what happened in Brownview?
So, for this year, I certainly would not want to see us long-term cut curriculum. For this year, I'd like to keep the money that I have to try to finish out this year's stuff. But I, I am, do believe I can use some grant funding to try to do some of our adoption. But I, long-term, cutting curriculum is gonna just make it worse, where we are already without having current curriculum. Our middle school history teachers have. Gary Locke, the governor, and their textbooks.
He's still the governor.
He was, but nobody else has made sense. Not that they would necessarily want tech, the textbooks, because there's a lot of things you can do with textbooks, but.
What were you doing? What was your curriculum you were buying this year?
So this year, I, I'm working on arts, arts and middle school science, although I don't know, I met with, I don't know that middle school science is gonna be ready. The arts, we'll be able to probably finish this year, because it's really with the arts, it's more about things than curriculum.
Can you do things out of Esther versus?
Not with art, not for art. But for ELA or math, I could see that, because those are the things, you know, that's, the funding is based on our title one, title one is, you know, reading, writing, math. But the, the K five ELA, if we get to a decision there, that would basically, that's probably gonna eat up pretty much most of that money. And I have middle school history and social studies waiting in the wings, and middle school in high school, ELA was supposed to be next year. PE and health is supposed to be next year, so we've, like, put things off and held money and done these things, and. That's what happened, you know, fifteen or twenty years ago, and then there was nothing happened for years and years and years. So a lot of these, these groups have been waiting for a really long time for us to provide them appropriate curriculum materials. So. For a year because of some of the other funding we have, but I would really hate to see us consider doing that long-term, and a hundred thousand dollars is not getting us very far, if that's all that's in there, so.
Is that for history?
Hundred thousand dollars, maybe would do history, um, but it's not gonna do history and art or ELA and.
You're doing art, art this year, right?
Art is this year, but that's on Matt's freeze now list, and I would say, let's not freeze it, let me finish with these people.
We'll get to that list.
I know, we're not to that list yet. Um, and then, if I can finish up with them, um, they've already actually have most of their stuff. I don't, I think we could do that for. Well under the hundred thousand dollars, and, but social studies is not gonna be ready, anyway.
And that's what was slated, right?
No, they're next year. Well, technically, the end of this year, but. Because of the science and art being behind because of COVID, and science is piloting a couple of curriculums right now. There is nothing appropriate yet to adopt for high school, or we could have that issue too. Um, but I'm not sure they're gonna be in the place that they're ready yet. We'll see.
Well, what would you be looking at for next year?
So right now on the list, if I can finish art, next year I would still have, well, if we, if I can finish science, we'll see. I have social studies. And six twelve ELA. Oh, I still have K five ELA. And that's the big, that's, that ELA is the very, it's a really expensive one. Um, social studies, six twelve ELA, six twelve PE, and, and, and help. K twelve, although we have current curriculum. For most, for pretty much for PE and health, I don't think that it would be a, a lot. There's really more work about. What they're doing in their courses and aligning their standards, so that one isn't gonna be a big one, but, uh, the K five ELA is.
But you thought we could. Make that out of Esther.
I, I, I do plus Eric has some grant money that he's been allocated to hold on to. But I don't know if we'll be able to do it all, but we're gonna try.
So that, that's one of the budgeting moves that we can make, so if it's. If it's basically kind of a direction from the board, to say if you can buy it out of grant, buy it out of grant, but if it's out of BEA, no buying. And so that, one of the things we'll run into here is that, for. You know, the, this choice, if there's any extras, consultants, curriculums, things like that, we're talking about cutting personnel and, and, uh. Classified positions, so we're buying books and cutting people. Right? And so this, about a hundred thousand dollars a year, that's at least two people with benefits that we're talking about, so, yeah, it's a. That, that will be one of the things I think that, um. We wanna pay attention to, at least for a year to say, let's freeze it, let's hold off, off on that.
Cause on the other hand. These principals all were here when, when the board said our results are not where they're supposed to be, but they also know as principals. They have really old curriculum that doesn't match the standards that they're being asked to teach right now. They don't, we don't have consistent curriculum in our, in our buildings in K five, so. I'm gonna always advocate on the side of getting the resources in teachers' hands that they need. Because we, if we're gonna expect them to meet a certain standard, we have to give them the tools to get there, and if we don't do that. We're expecting to figure it out on our own.
Would they, um, K through five ELA be ready? The training be in the classrooms in the fall?
Possibly. We have a meeting tomorrow? We have a meeting tomorrow, and we are, we're getting close, but it's, they have done so much. Deep work to get here, and we don't wanna rush into something that we aren't comfortable with. Um, but we also know that it needs to happen because, um, like, you know, the height is using a, a curriculum called CIA, which they, it's really not curriculum. Um, it's, it's not enough. It doesn't have the cognitive demand for our students that they need. So we know we need the tools in teachers' hands. They're stru-, they're struggling, they're frustrated. They're trying to, you know, figure out things on their own, and that's not fair.
That's what I hear, I have the teachers, and I think elementary parents too are really concerned about reading curriculum.
Yeah, and that's, and, uh, we're, I feel like the majority of the group is ready. But we're gonna meet tomorrow, we're talking about our last curriculum we're reviewing tomorrow. We'll score it, we'll discuss it, and then hopefully we'll be able to move forward on that.
I'm fine with not spending BA funds if we can do that at a grant, so we should.
I think this is gonna be kind of our one exception here for that, honestly, but we'll see. Okay? School board's seventy-five hundred. It's on there, and then I. We think that we did carry that over. I don't know exactly which memberships that is.
So I think it's more. More conferences, yeah, and so we look at the WASTA conference. Um, and we haven't been in a number of years because of COVID, but they're actually coming out with, and this will be a little bit of flex. I know that Lisa had the opportunity to attend, um, online, at least a legislative, I don't know if it was. But more and more, they're doing that, that you can attend virtually, um, through Zoom, and so, uh, that would allow us to all be online and not have to. Travel to Spokane or Bellevue. Sometimes it's nice to get away, but, um, I remember the first year we did this. The board, we had scheduled, or the board was scheduled to go to. The National School Board Conference, like Texas somewhere, um, and that was an initial cut that we made, that, uh, when we said. There's gonna be no out-of-state travel, um, or a few exceptions for that, that the board really took. Took the lead on that and said, this includes us too. So, yeah, so I think that primarily that's for conferences, um, as stipends down there as well.
And so would you like to keep the seventy-five hundred?
I was gonna cut it.
Keep it there is not there, right? Keep it there is no more.
There, if it's not, if it's not a membership like WASTA or something, we can actually get a little use out of it, and we'll have to be part of anyone.
Maintenance and grounds, this is, uh, we currently provide some office support at ma-, at, over at the maintenance office. It used to be something that our former maintenance director needed. Quite a bit, um, our current maintenance director. Does not. He's, um. So that's what that for us.
That's an easy one.
Custodial is a tough one, so go ahead and start talking about that one.
Yeah, custodial, correct.
Uh, yeah, I might be a little over here over that, there's a lot. Something like that, there's a lot. Uh, I don't have that scheduled. Yeah, and so what that would ultimately mean would be, if we reduce custodial staff, and we have already subs working that are not even on the list. So I can tell you it's fifteen point whatever, but there's some people that have been working year-round that, you know, all year that are not on the list. That would be Brian taking the staff he has and reallocating how it's used and making some decisions about how buildings, like what gets done on certain days and.
So can you clarify that? So we have fifteen custodians. How many do we have for the high school?
There's only five on the list, but I think they've had six this year, or. But there's a sixth one that's been here. All year.
And then how about the middle school? Four. Kevin?
One, one, four.
One in the third?
Yeah.
Uh, Keen River, yeah?
I, I don't know. I would say they have like two and a half, and that's probably what heights has, two is two and a half. And then we have like a little part that works at make, like each of the offices that's broken up, so.
Where would we eliminate the three, has that been discussed?
So we would not determine whether three are eliminated. Brian, with our director, would have to look at the workload and redistribute. So what's, what, what works. So we've reduced in custodial before, it's not. Something that's sweet love, but.
Yeah, I know, you, you made a comment, we have fifteen custodians, but we have other custodian subs.
I, there's a, there's been a sub working on here, here at the high school.
I was gonna say the number. So there was like sixteen, now it's sixteen.
That have really been working, they're just not on contract. That last one is.
So he'll just figure it out.
It would be up to him to figure it out, and, I mean, you guys could say, do two, do one, you can say whatever you want.
Now, with that said, we also have more grass.
And I actually think, I actually think the hundred and fifty that we put on the extension is only two, it's not three. The three was with, if the levy didn't pass, so I think that's just two.
So, yeah, you were saying there's more grass to mow, and actually the square footage of the buildings have increased, and so we're looking at a bigger high school. Uh, more classrooms at King River, we'll need more classrooms at Heights, and so, um, and, and then the idea. About public perception, I think plays into this whole thing too. We got bruised up a little bit in the process record bulletin. When the high school first opened about, um, you're not even staffing it with custodians. And so why on earth would we want to, uh, contribute to the process school district when, you know, you're not stewards of the resources you have? That's come up about Art Piper too, um, and so it's a little bit of. There's an idea sometimes I think that, that superintendents have about broken windows. And like, we just let broken windows be broken, and the community will take action, and they'll become fed up with the, the facilities, and at some point, they'll vote for a bond. More times than not, I think that, um, that kind of breeds ill will, um, you know, our, our people who've, um. Don't get sat, are, aren't satisfied with. Don't get sat- are aren't satisfied with the district and how they're maintaining their facilities. And so um, it's kind of tricky because. Um, well, I don't know if you've received calls about it or driven by already like what's happening with the grass. I was just in there and it was a mess. It was, you know, so um, as well as our teachers too, they recognize it when. Their wastebaskets haven't been emptied, things like that. So. Deanna's talking about paring down some of the, some of these different responsibilities and trying to create efficiencies within the job. So they're only gonna address um wastebaskets on, you know, they'll address wastebaskets every day, but they may only vacuum. You know, once every other day or something like that, so.
My question, if we eliminate two or three, then while it puts that in a position, no, that's not bringing subs in because things are out of hand.
The principals will always say they need to work out.
That's, that's a catch there too. Because we have people who bill out, who will bill out overtime because they have pride in their job and they want to be thorough. Um, and so to stop that, what you do is you hire a sub to say, we want you to work contracted times. And if we can't get it done, well, then maybe we need somebody else. But it ends up costing, costing. The district regardless of if you pay overtime or if you're paying a start to do the work.
Now, I'm assuming at elementary school, kids kind of police the room. Is that true?
All of it, at all the levels, they should police the room and not leave garbage or things on the floor. Um, but you know, if it's snow, you know, some sort of day where they cut a bunch of stuff up, there's only so much you can do. Glitter day is a bad day, but um. After they cut the grass is a bad day, or if it's been snowy and we're like, oh, we're not gonna mop the halls, you don't have.
I'm just not gonna mop the halls. I don't have the order in my house. Thank you, Christmas.
Here's the thing is, we can go through and all these things that you guys are saying, yes, yes, yes. And then when we get, I can send you what that comes up to. We can talk about it again because we still have time, but so maybe it's one you think about, if you wanna think about it.
In, yeah. I would say with something like, something like custodial. You can monitor it and you don't have to do all the cuts at once. So you can cut one and then see how it goes and then kind of monitor it over time. And if you go too far, oh, well, we need to hire that person back. So.
Well, maybe you could have, you know, cut one and then just have one guy board the other day at Heights versus, you know, something like that too, so.
One of the other positions, and the P S E actually brought this up, is trying to blend positions. And so we're in dire need of bus drivers.
Yeah.
Um, and so bus drivers work, you know, at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day. And so try and create a position called a bustodial. You know, so you you have a bus driver who basically after they end up end driving bus. That they go to a building, they're custodian during the daytime period. And then they drive us at the end of the day.
Because people, a lot of people can't just work that bus beginning and end of the day. You can't get another, can't do another job. It's like to keep them working all day.
Well, and that.
The C D L issue.
And that kicks into what I was saying, you know, we have more yard to mow than ever. So, you know, if they do a half day in the building and then a half day working for maintenance.
Yeah.
That also, you know, that kills a couple birds. One same thing with bus drivers, even the guys that are currently driving the bus.
Well, because what also happens is. We have a half time custodian and a one half time bus driver. We're paying benefits twice. For one person. Or two people, when you have one person doing all that, you you're paying benefits as well. So there's definitely issues. We can, I mean, what do you guys, what do you want me to do? Okay.
Look deeply.
Okay, is that, uh, okay, want me to hold on that one? Want me to do one, two?
I'd rather like, yeah, you are the best custodian.
Best custodian or best lower.
That's not gonna be like tomorrow.
That would be overtime. Yeah, I like.
The best custodian would be uh, at the same time that the school's running.
We just want to be careful and not make print custodians.
Yeah. Transportation's its own, its own fun. And so.
Yeah.
So money can flow into it, like B E A can flow into it, the transportation can't, the money can't flow out.
Yeah.
And so we could, we could kind of blend or braid funding in that way that you're offsetting the cost of somebody who's out of B E A. With transportation. And so they become full time because of those two gigs.
Right, right. I would say somebody, I mean, it's not something.
I used to have a food services bus driver.
Yeah, we have food services bus drivers now, and we have actually custodian food services. And we, I mean, we have some of those combo people already. Um, so what would you guys like me to put there? Or do you want to wait?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Okay, question mark is there?
There's at least one sub working right now.
I know there's one sub working right now.
So you could go.
I've seen the list of names and I see that people work, so.
So at one point three theoretically.
We could also go, I could, we could also go to Brian and say, Brian, if you had this, what does this look like and how's this gonna work? Have them work it through.
Yeah, I guess they'll have a much closer look.
Okay, well, let's talk about the the Canvas cuts. Sean, when we talked about that. I realize it's not popular with some people, but we have teams and we're sure we will classroom. What is the comparable capability?
I I I don't think that it's fair to compare, to say it's comparable because they're really not.
They're, they're, they're different, but the same.
They're different, but the same. Uh, Canvas is an L M S platform, a learning management system. Uh, the teachers have the functionality of putting homework into Canvas. Um, students can respond in Canvas. They can turn in their homework on Canvas. They keep a calendar. They chat with their students. They can ch- chat within their class. Uh, the advantage to Canvas is almost all secondary university education uses it. So it's a, it's a pretty seamless transition from our kids. Here to college. Um. Canvas is is really a state of the art L M S. It's, it's great. It's expensive. Uh, so at a middle school level, they use Teams, uh, classroom Teams as their quote unquote L M S. Again, it's really not, but it can be used very similarly. Uh, you can turn in homework on Teams. You can collaborate. You can collaborate with your classes on Teams. Different uh applications can be embedded similar to Canvas. Uh, different spell check, English, mathematics, different applications that help with homework can also be embedded in Teams. The functionality is very similar. The the problem in why a lot of our staff, because I sent out an email trying to push in the blow. Um, we're unhappy is because you can't just export your curriculum from Canvas and import it into Teams. They are going to be completely redoing their classrooms. Can they do it and will it function? Yeah, not as, not as seamless as Canvas, but it will function like the learning management platform. And we already have it. We already paid for that. So when we cut Canvas, we're not getting a lesser product, but still spending money. We are really cutting twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, but the teachers are going to spend the summer redoing their s- their classes. Because you can't just export it and import it back in.
It's got a district wide license.
It is a district wide license.
So there's no limit on how many kids are in it?
There is. I pay per student.
Oh, except per student, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I was gonna say there's the possibility, instead of losing the Canvas, lose whatever the middle school uses, lose Canvas.
Oh, well, that's our, that's our office suite. So we would be losing Word, Excel, Outlook.
So I use, I use both and I can see why teachers, like for teachers, but I use both, but as a student. Three, six, Teams is way better as a student. Uh, Canvas is not. Canvas is put something in, get a message back. I mean, it's not interactive, really.
Well, it can be. And the middle school kind of uses it that way. Uh, it would take a considerable amount of. Um, education, training, training uh with our staff. There's several schools that use Teams as their L M S and they're really successful at it. Or Google.
What do we pay for Teams now?
Google is an option too. We don't, Teams is not a separate application. It's part of our office suite. So um, yeah, so our office suite is about, I mean, we have the option of like forty different apps and that's one of them.
But that's a license.
That's a license, yeah.
So we've even had this discussion too, that each computer within the district, there's licensing fees on. Right? And so to to move to like open source where, so Google Docs, all these different things that um. Or Open Office is another example of that. So we wouldn't have to pay the licensing fee. And so we're talking. There, there's free things, like we talked about Google Classroom, right? Um, as opposed to Canvas. And so. They're not apples to apples, but it's um as comparable as we can get. With Canvas, there are programs that can continue to have it. So like if Rick Follett said for C T E, yeah. Even though that's a decision, I would like to keep Canvas for my C T E teachers. He actually could pay for that out of the, out of uh his budget.
We're gonna want.
But then it couldn't be used by.
It couldn't be used by other people that are outside of C T E.
Initially, when the Chromebooks went out, were there, was there a problem with the Chromebook software and Canvas working together? No, because Canvas is web based. Do you get, do you think you get a lot of tech support calls for Canvas? No. Okay. I mean, initially when we sent Chromebooks home and we were moving to that, yes, that it was really just a. Learning how to use something, not necessarily a full support. It was mostly just training.
So you're paying per student?
I pay per student.
Is that just at the effort?
District wide.
So is it because that's how they, you pay per student, but you have to pay for the whole district? Or could you pay per student and just get it saved for the high school?
I could pay per student, but it would have to be by campus. So I can do it for just the high school, or I can do it for just the middle school, but I couldn't do. Five hundred kids. That's why Rick didn't do it for just the C T E. We would have to do the campus.
Michael, is it something you guys feel like you have to know?
If you talk to two of the five departments, yes. You talk to the other three departments?
I think that's probably similar for you though. You're English people who spot history and reading.
We have special studies. We have quite a few different using that.
So what's the cost if we just use it at the high school?
So we only have to have like go back and look at the book for this. I don't remember how much this is.
Thirty percent mark is a principal, right?
Well, there's eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and seventy kids at the high school right now out of twenty-five hundred.
So what is the twenty-one thousand? Is that per year?
Yeah, that's per year.
Thirty-four percent of that cost.
Is it using the elementary school?
Seven thousand.
It is, but not.
Rarely.
Not rarely and.
The, then, uh, yeah, when we were in the COVID closure, they used clever and they didn't use.
They use Canvas a lot. Uh, not so much now. At an elementary level, it's not. We have other options. I don't know that the elementary teachers are gonna cry if they lose Canvas. Like the high school, I, the minute I sent out that email, I had a ton of teachers. And and they were understanding. I would say for the most part, the staff is really understanding for what the board particularly is going through. But it will impact them. So we can keep it for just that, for the high school, for the whole.
I want that for you at your building, Michael, with only the high school, but it's your student.
Black math. We just use workbooks. Couple departments use uh Teams and a couple departments use. Canvas. So once it's used, it was, I mean, it would be an investment in time to.
The reality is. Brian's right about that transition to college because. Every kid that goes to C B C is using Canvas. Every kid that goes to Eastern.
I know that was some of the problem with online school. Um, is that everybody used something different and you had to go to these, all these different programs and.
Yeah.
Parents aren't tech people. I'm not a tech person.
Well, part of that is teachers being really about to, they were figuring out, they're trying to use them there halfway.
And that, that was, the other component to that was we use Teams for every one of our video meetings.
Yeah.
So some of ours where you're already in Teams, you're already using it every day for your meetings. Hey, let's use the same.
Is it one of those groups, science?
Science used Canvas.
Oh, yeah, so Canvas. Well, I mean, they potentially are changing anyway, so maybe it's not that big of a deal for them, so.
But that was, that was the part of it before was we had different platforms because we're using the video component. And then the. The part of being in three sixty-five, and so we're using Word and Excel. And if you're in Canvas, it tried to save it as a Google Doc, so you had to work on the workbook.
Working between the two cam.
So, but I mean, this year, we will, and that's not the, it's not the concern that we hear where we've worked through that quite a bit, so. A lot of upfront learning and. We're kind of talking about saying that. I mean.
But all adds up when we're trying to get to one point eight million, so just saying. Um, so what do you guys, what if we, but at this time, we cut this amount in half, you have a conversation with your people that are using it. Come back and let us know for sure. That work?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we keep it at the high school. And possibly at the middle school. Is that what we would?
Yeah.
I will get a solid quote from the instructor for the two buildings.
Now, would it be possible, because we're doing the whole campus, to have C T E? Do a percentage of the payment?
Can we negotiate something different with the contract?
Not with the con- the contract is what it is. I pay per student.
So if we said we want access to it for. X number of class periods, which is equivalent to X number of kids. Would they negotiate that with us?
No, it's per, per F T E.
Well, if it's what I'm getting at.
Students per head campus.
What I'm thinking is if it's, you know, ten thousand for the whole campus.
But I, I see where you're going with that.
Fifteen percent.
Forty percent of our classes is C T E and they pay for it.
If we do that with uh school data solutions, which is our high school and beyond plan, C T E pays a portion of that bill because they've got so many kids that are in it.
Yeah, let's look at that too.
It's just hard to go back when we've already paid for something and then turn around and say somebody else is paying for it because you can invest the plan.
Well, I mean, even if it's just planned for next year, but if this is something we could look at for, you know, we're cutting something and then next year. Well, it's actually, it's not so planting, it's making the program pay its own way.
Well, it, they might, not from the state, not from the auditor's opinion, but I would wonder too, like, like the, the program that Sean's talking about totally was, it's a, you know. Really important for that college career pathway, but I wonder if you can go to C T E as a single C T E teacher using Canvas.
All of our C T E teachers using all the.
There you go. And that maybe, then maybe it works out that way.
Let's look at that, even if it's just for down the road.
Right now, we're leaving in ten, five. We'll see what happens. Um, utilities, we could skip that one. The other. So this category, I wish I had Craig's specific list. Um, but I do believe that the hundred and eighteen thousand was all of those things you see. The Camp Boot and the P B I S and added building allocation, summer school extended day, Missoula two competition. I believe the forty-six thousand was, is a summer school. I think it is just summer school. Transportation, which we are gonna fund with program. So I don't see why you wouldn't do that.
The forty-six is the summer school or summer school transportation?
Summer school transportation. And technically, and technically it's just funded for summer school. We've used it for transportation. But um. Because we were paying that, that's just, that was the district's portion, I guess, but that's what I believe he budgeted for summer school. And we were gonna use it for transportation.
So does that mean Camp Booten comes back this year, next year? I mean, that, according to this line item, that's saying it would.
That, that's not my decision.
Yeah, we can, well, it's whatever the board wants to do.
I mean, in that vein.
It's a love.
Yeah.
There are teachers who love the program. Um, there are parents who love the program. The insurance company doesn't love the program. Um, they, it's been, kids have raised funds to help pay for it. But then there's also a portion out of our B E A that pays for teacher stipends that are associated with it.
Yeah.
And so, and then on top of that, it does, it does take a quite a bit of administrative work. Kevin, please.
Kevin.
Yeah, yeah, so it is.
Are you in the love or another?
Well, I used to go to campus a fifth grade teacher. It was, I, I liked it as an administrator. There are other areas I need to focus on, to be honest with you. Um, plus the deadline for submitting for next year was two months ago.
Yeah.
That's good. Once you've given up your spot, it's kind of hard to get.
Unless you want to go. Unless you wanna go in February or March, which is not gonna be enjoyable.
Snow there in May, so.
What about other campside, besides Camp Wooton?
We, we had in the years. Uh, when this was brought up to be taken home from the budget in the past, they explored other camps. But most of the time, all those camps put those good, that, that good time. Uh, when the weather is good, a year in advance.
Yeah.
So, because of the situation we were in, I said it's crazy and. Because we weren't sure if the light was gonna pass or not, we decided.
What, one of the options, and this is, um, Peggy, you talked about this before. Is to do a, a series of days, maybe a, a day camp. And so we've gotten away from field trips, like when I was in school, we used to go to Fort Simcoe, Whitman Mission. Um, Peggy talked about. And she's at Patterson, she took her kids down to Crowe Bu, did some science lessons down there.
Um, we actually kept him down there.
Good.
Yeah.
So, so there, there are different things we can do to kind of replace it. Uh, versus doing overnight camping experience. Um, yeah, I. Having gone through foster schools, it was, I think, a unique experience, it's. The first time that a lot of our kids um are away from their parents overnight, uh, with other, other students. Um, it's the first time a lot of our kids get the experience of going camping or learn some survival techniques and things like that. Um, and, yeah, yeah, um. It's all about priorities or what you wanna do.
Okay, so right now, we're talking about. Insurance, we talked about negotiating property contracts, but there's no information on that yet, so. Print copy machines, that's reducing to copy machines, I think we can do that, and I don't think that's gonna have a big negative impact. Um, special education. Uh, reducing paras and office support. I believe that that amount, that, that's the, the third, the other. Idea that is just reduction off support because there's um office support for the administrators, but the administrators run there year round. The office support is, so that's been that discussion, that's the twenty-five thousand. I don't know that, I mean, it's not a directed pack on students.
It's in makeup.
Um, food service, that's just saying. Darling, that's some money out of your own rich. It's tough, I, I, I will tell you, I think if we're, if we're going community eligibility, eligibility provision. I think it's gonna cost us more money, but we'll see, it's not gonna save us money. Even if we reduce staff, if you do convert community eligibility provision, you don't need the actu staff people. But the actu staff people do that for a little bit of their time and then work in food service, doing food stuff the rest of the time. But unless you have a really high percentage of your kids on free reduced lunch, the districts, you're still paying for it, so. I did the calculation about four or five years ago, we were at a similar percentage then, it was gonna cost quite a bit of money. So we'll see, I just, I think it's gonna be hard for her, but we're saying, you know, cut some. Craig's talked to her about it already, and she didn't say no, but her eyes stop big, I think is what I said. So, I'm not sure what that fifty thousand is gonna be. Credit retrieval, that's just using program funds, I think we could do the forty. Um, and the other was kind of a big category. The two hundred thousand, but I do think it was building, some building budgets. Um, overtime, there's quite a bit of overtime happening in certain areas. That was kind of the majority of it, building budget and overtime, there really wasn't other staffing unless it was something temporary. And I think in the end, we said that could, we could probably do that to the tune of a hundred thousand, I don't know if it's a hundred or a hundred fifty. But I think that could happen either way.
With that, with the food service, how likely do you actually think that is?
So.
That's gonna be.
Here's the thing, here's something, and I don't think it adds up to fifty thousand.
If she.
She does, she does catering, she was catering. She charges for, I, I, from what I can, from what I believe she does, she charges, she does charge, she does. They do a great job, but oftentimes they staff it, I don't know if she's charging for the staffing to whatever program that's happening for, so. We're having a parent night, and that's title one, we should charge that to title one. Maybe she is, and maybe that's a counterpoint to the cost, but I don't know if it is, that's one place, the other other place is reducing people. I mean, you're not, like, food's not gonna get cheaper.
No, it's gonna go the other way.
Yeah, and so the only, honestly, the only way is reducing staff and, and that's hard now.
So that's.
Next year, might actually be. We might actually be able to do some of that, I mean, everyone's gonna be in town next year. And we'll have, we won't be doing all, as hopefully as. Life's transporting, we're still gonna be transporting because they're gonna be cooking here. But each of the, the other two new buildings, the two redone buildings will have their warming kitchens, so. If it's burritos, no, they don't have to cook the burritos here, they'll cook those in the kitchen there. So it would be her looking, I know Craig's already talked to her about it, so, and maybe it's coming back to her and saying, where do you see? But yeah, food costs. But the reimbursement rate hopefully will go up.
About food vendors, I mean, does that go out to bed or are we kind of stuck with certain?
I think that's all.
There's some non-compete.
State bid stuff.
So you can't, you can't compete with like a free, free reduced price lunch program by having private people.
Or like. Using local, because it hasn't met certain standards, like buying apples from a farmer.
Yeah, if you, if you have, yeah, that, it's, that's kind of crazy. It's like a gray area because it can't necessarily be on campus, but if you have a food truck. Park outside, or you have an open campus and kids are going for brunch, then, I mean, it, it doesn't really make sense, like, why can't you?
So, here's one thing.
So we have to stick with the vendors that we buy all our food from, but we can't go out and look at different vendors?
I think they're state.
No, there, the vendor, the vendor and the bidding is different, and so. They have a buy America clause, and so you have to bid out within the United States first, and so. If I want oranges, I can get oranges from Mexico cheaper. But the US government has said, you have to get a bid from Florida orange growers before you go out to do in Mexico. And so, there, there's these different provisions within food services that. Make it, and so you actually could, you could bid it lower, and you guys will approve probably like, um. For whoever we do for milk bids, that usually is part of our summer work, and like, let's go through diesel and milk bids and all those things, so. They'll do that, but, yeah, I would assume that with the price of, um. With the price of gasoline, petroleum going up, the, the cost of milk is gonna go up too for shipping, things like that, so.
So the other thing that probably will actually help us though next year to help offset is. So Craig, you know, he's talking about like, oh, we're serving a lot of lunches, but we don't serve very many breakfasts. Um, well, next year, we're required to have breakfast after the bell. So we'll be serving a lot more breakfast next year than we have ever served before, so that will help our reimbursement rate. To go up, because the K five, they will be served breakfast in their classroom, once, at, at the start of school. Um, and at the middle school, the high school, they have like, they'll have a kind of a grabbing go with a longer break. Period where the kids can go and pick up breakfast between like first and second period. So we will serve a lot more breakfast next year, I'm sure we will, that we serve now, because kids, even if they eat breakfast. By second period, they might want more breakfast, I don't, you know, I'll, I'll take another breakfast, I had it at home, but I was, middle school boys are hungry in ten minutes anyway, so. High school boys probably too. Uh, so I do think that's gonna help next year, but it'll be hard to know what that's gonna look like until it happens and we can actually see the impact.
So to back up one more for the office staff to spread.
Yeah.
That's a, kind of a bender, isn't it?
I circled it.
Yeah.
So, uh, for me, so what, what I'll do is Matt and I, I'll work together to go through this based on our notes. And, and, and send an update with what you guys said, yes, do this, what that really adds up to. Um, and then with the things that are kind of outstanding or undecided, okay?
Did we say yes to the last two, fifty thousand and the one hundred thousand?
Yeah, yeah, I have that as a yes, because.
Three hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred, and that's.
That's it.
Yeah, we'll hit.
Yeah.
I'm not a math person.
Well, I, I.
Well, it might be close.
Well, the teachers alone is seven fifty-two though, so you gotta be about a million. Because we are, we already have the six conditions reduced, we didn't really talk about it, we talked about it earlier. So I think we're closer, maybe around a million, but I will add it up. And send you guys the other options.
However, before we get too far out of our speeds on this, on the other one.
At least we'll have an updated sheet and everything.
Sure.
On the, the, the other category.
Uh-huh.
Of all the things listed, and, and they're, they're all important, you get it, but there's only like three that are actual. Uh, learning base, you know. There, there's different things going on there, so, could you go through and kind of look at some of those?
Yeah.
Separate them out. Right, I, I think where everybody actually looks at. You know, what, what Camp Wooton is and what this is, and it's easy.
A number.
It'll be a little easier to make a decision.
We, we have that list at one point, but we can bring that list back. Or can you go to you? All right, we've got it.
And then for the forty-six thousand on that one, that was also a separate grant.
Yeah, I circled that, yeah.
So that's a circle, and then more information on the remaining components.
Yeah. Or marketing to do.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's not like, you know, credit retrieval and, and, you know, run and start.
But we'll, we'll, uh, we'll figure those out a different way, they'll still happen. Maybe some of these things, the things are still gonna happen, it's gonna figure out a different way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else we missed that anybody else noticed? All right, and then the next one will be. Um, when we see immediate actions and it's a resolution. Zero five dash two two, the economic emergency.
Yeah, so before that, there was a worksheet that said now.
Oh, I thought that was all the same.
Yeah.
Oh, my bad.
So the, the only one, the only one that was action, you know, the, um, thing. Craig took action on it based upon that meeting. Was the vehicle use, limiting or restricting, um, district vehicle use. Um, so. The other ones, we've talked about curriculum adoption, uh, freezing that, uh, limiting summer work. Uh, and some of this is, you know, due, maybe due to construction. Um, canceling consultancies, uh. Review in the, uh, this came, came about as we were talking about, is, is there room to like subcontract? Or find a contractor that could do services for us, like, uh. I don't know, Boeing, landscaping, things like this. So, um, to review, renegotiate, or recruit and hire, rehire. Um, reduce building budgets, uh, from, from here, so if, uh, buildings haven't spent the money. To.
I don't think, if you look at them, I don't think they have any left.
Yeah.
So I use a lot of the money initially to pay for stuff next year. Yeah, it's a big chunk of my budget, to be honest with you.
So freeze hiring, um, unless approved, approved by the board. Um, restrict your limit overtime, uh, summer school limit offerings. Procurement cards, this has actually been a work in progress that we've talked about. Um, about getting a P card and giving, instead of doing purchase orders. Um, to have principals using P cards and then perhaps getting a rebate with our purchases. Discuss athletics fees with Patterson, um, donations, uh, we talked about that in terms of athletics as well as GoFundMe. Um, vehicle use, um, again. Uh, leveraging grant fund, funding to pay for material supplies and operating costs. Um, so that would be like as Kevin's talking about. To whatever the reserve is, to go out and start buying paper and things like that to offset the budget next year. So we're kind of stockpiling the, um, looking at contract services with community partners. This is for nursing, um, perhaps, looking to, uh. Athletic foundation or work with our boosters, and offsetting costs. Um, efficiency upgrades, this revolved around maybe, um, not air conditioning the buildings as much. Or, um, running the boilers was hot for winter. Looking at volunteers, and then, of course, with all the new construction going in, looking at impact fees. So, uh, we can start to take action on any of these of work goes comfortable with. Um, athletic fees for Patterson, of course, there are these negotiations that have to go into that, or working with them as partners. Um. But a lot of these things, we can, we can start to move on if the board is interested, and what we're looking at doing is mitigating. Um, or reducing any of the spending towards the end of the year, and so. Uh, we can increase the, the surplus or our budget surplus at the end of the year.
Do you stand up to you guys?
I gotta talk, Matt and I went over this list when I went down in business about the budget again. I, I was interested, we don't really have a lot of people that take a wheel at home compared to a lot of the. There were a lot of things on here I found interesting. Like donations, I think there's businesses that would contribute if. Like foundations, boosters, if it's nothing else, if they have a map and a paper on the crowd to pull you across your athletics. You know, we're not letting them hang a sign of the stadium, but, you know.
Well, the part, the part you gotta think about on that genie is. It's the no restriction part.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying yes or no.
Yeah.
But if you open it up, for one, you open it up for all.
Yeah.
You know, if something's legal, it's fair game. And in the past, uh, we've had, you know, meaningless wineries, for instance, that were interested, and I personally have no issue, I don't have an issue either way.
Right.
But at the same time, you know, we had, uh, uh. I can't even think of his name, the, the popcorn, uh, William, that was his last name. Yeah, that he wanted to do a, a donation, and at the time, uh, Ray was adamantly against it.
Hmm.
Therefore, you know.
Yeah.
It's just, it's fair game, if it's open for one, it's open for all, so.
I don't have a problem with finding reasons, so.
Well, I don't either, that's what I'm saying, but if you open it for one.
Yeah.
If, if it's, if it's illegal, well. Semi-illegal, I mean, it's still not federal, I guess, but at least in the state. You could have, you know, uh, Altitude say, hey, we wanna sponsor something and hang a banner on our fence at the stadium.
I said, I don't want banners on the fence.
Well, I'm, what, what I'm saying though is anything you open up, if you open it up with no restrictions.
Oh, yeah, I don't like the no restrictions, no.
That's, that's my point.
Yeah.
So that's something you really wanna think through and record.
Why, uh, are, why are we not, if, if we're not, um, looking at the impact? We've had a lot of construction going on.
Yeah, yeah, we, we did, we were looking into it before. Um, Rocky, when Rocky was our legal counsel, before he lasted, left and was of counsel. Um, that was something that we were first pursuing. Um, the pandemic kind of threw a little bit of a mention to that. Um, so it's something we haven't, we haven't rebooted that conversation.
When the, uh, apartments were built behind Schloss, they were gonna pay. Remember this, Deanna, they were gonna pay some impact fees, the city, uh, because they were waiting for their permits. The city kind of negotiated for us, they were gonna make like three payments enough for a bus and a couple of teachers and some other things. Made the first one and then changed their mind, but they'd already been issued all the permits. And then the city, I don't, I'm sure we could probably find the emails.
They, they only paid, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't part of the negotiations, but I, I, the amount they paid was like sixteen thousand, it wasn't, it wasn't a lot. Um.
We're supposed to be like two.
You know, for cities, they, those kinds of things, they think, I think they think, uh, like, push development away, cause. You know, you don't want to pay those kinds of things, but. If, if, if the reality, I know that a lot of it is upper mobility, but somebody's moving out of a house, somebody else is moving in, so. Yeah.
Public housing doesn't have to pay the same impact fee, as like new.
Public housing doesn't have to pay the same impact fee as like new housing does, but when you issue an impact fee, it has to be done before the final plat is approved.
Yes.
So when you get the notice from a government entity that, you know, you, school district will have a housing development come in, they send you the notice, you have to be on it and get that back to that entity before the final plat is approved. So housing that's going in and being built, that, that's done. But, you know, any of their impact fees that are planning, you know, in, that are available or, you know, plaques that haven't run a final plat yet, that would be something to consider, but, because that's paid by, you know, each person buying their.
But even, I think, I think hate comes, there's, they're just doing their plaques by, their final plaques by phase, and they're only, it's just, I know they submitted their second phase. I don't know if they've gone further, so, I think there's still maybe some potential there, but, I mean, we keep hearing about all the homes. We should also have parks too.
Well, I think the point was to, you know, even if it, if they're not completely done, then we might as well.
Yeah, pursue it, yeah.
I'm not sure with the one that happened the first time, if what we got in impact fees offset what it cost in attorney's fee.
Not even close. I remember that discussion, we got like, it was, it was like five percent of, of what the agreement was.
I think it's like twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Well, it's a, I've talked to other superintendents, um, and so there was one that passed a while back, uh, Sandra Hill. And she was actually, uh, she had her superintendent credential, but she had her JV as well. And so she said, she goes, I had, on our staff, we had two members who had sat for the bar and who were, like, we had internal in-house legal counsel, and she goes, it was so crazy, because she said the state, the state, the county, and then the town each have certain things, and so she said sorting through that was, you know, just mind-boggling to us, and we didn't have time to, so they ended up hiring somebody who specialized from that in the Portland area to come in and consult with them. So, um, yeah, it's a, I don't think it's easy, it's a, it's not as easy as saying, cop up the money, yeah, give us the money.
Yeah, that's why it's at the bottom. I would probably, just to start off, um, my highlights are limited summer work, low-key contracts. Uh, restrict or limit overtime, I'd still like to see where the P card deal goes, um, especially if we can use it maybe, um, you know, at the beginning, just for utilities, and just see how that goes with the rebates, and not only what it would cost us, but also what we get back.
When it comes out, we did, we have a limit on credit card payments. So they, as big as ours are, I'm telling you, nobody will go for that.
There's some other things we could do.
We could pay a portion of it.
Pay it twice.
Well, because we had contractors wanting to pay these big things, and they realized really quick how much it was costing them.
Well, that's why I'm saying if it costs, if the term is two percent, we get three percent back, first of all.
Yeah, maybe it's worth checking in.
So Patterson athletic fee, looking at donations, um, but I'm not sure about, yeah, just looking at donations, um, and now, basically the rest of them, efficiency upgrades and impact fees were kind of on my, well, into the list.
Moving on. We have the resolution zero five dash two two.
So we didn't post this as, this meeting is action to be taken. And so what we were planning on doing is, just to give an opportunity for the board to review this, and if the board's all right with it, we'll roll this into the, in Wednesday's agenda and do, um, do a revision, uh, tomorrow. But this will actually declare that, um, you know, we, we are concerned about the budget. And, uh, we're gonna try and have a balanced budget or as close to as we can get, and that we're expecting to have, um, some cuts.
I have a question on number two. Says the superintendent may take all actions authorized to the superintendent by law to address the economic emergency. Is that, uh, RCW law, or is that policy within the district?
I don't know, Craig, Craig drafted this, and we had, he had pulled some, some resolutions from the past that it addresses, or kind of prepped, uh, prepped the board when, uh, there was a levy failure before. So he wrote this, uh, I could have Sean Lumper take a look at it. But, but I think they're talking about, um, reductions in force, and, uh, anything that goes along like that.
So legal hasn't looked at it?
No.
I think that's a good idea, this, my concern is this, how do we justify an enrollment decline emergency now, when at every board meeting, we've had a graph showing that for ten years, enrollment's gone down, so we declare the emergency, people get terminated because of it, saying, oh, this enrollment emergency, and they just turn around and file a lawsuit saying, uh, how do you justify an emergency? You've had an enrollment decline for ten years and you're bidding to do your third elementary school. And I think that puts us in an interesting position, where we could be in a dicey position.
Yeah, I definitely talked to, uh, I talked to Sean Lumper today about that, and, uh, he knows that, I mean, it's difficult to resolve these issues, and, um, you know, there are opinions that exist about what, what boards should do. In, in the past, we've used our reserves to kind of balance that out in hopes that we would have more people retire or resign and just choose not to fill positions. And so, I think that it intersects with the fact that we, you know, we were funded before MacLary on a different funding model. And then, you know, we continued to have staff after MacLary. Um, and we didn't, we never adjusted to the par typical school model, and with that, we've seen stagnant or declining enrollment over the years. So it, it's tough, um, I think it's a tough decision, uh, we, we could look at tapping into cash reserves, um, I know that that's not a popular, um, stance to take, but, you know, that, that's kind of what, what we're talking about, you know, what, how aggressive do we wanna be, how conservative do we wanna be, um, what do we feel comfortable with? What do our constituents feel comfortable with, you know, and so I think that's a, that's a piece two. Touching base with our stakeholders and saying, you know, this is kind of the situation we're in.
Well, I think if, you know, if we had a balanced budget over the years, you know, we wouldn't have some of our facility issues that we have today. You know, you, you know, if, if our budgets were balanced and we were able to manage monies each year to where you're actually increasing that, now you actually have a pool of money to work with to redo the, the track, or, or to update certain, certain facilities, now everything's kind of an emergency. You know, where things are becoming unsafe or unusual. So, I, I mean, I think by being diligent, having a close to a balanced budget as possible will allow us to leverage some of these dollars without going back and asking for a bond to fix some of these things, you know, like the stadium or the track or something like that, so. That's the reason I'm pushing for a balanced budget, even though we do have reserves, I get that. Um, I do think it should be policy that we actually have a set percent. Uh, whether it's five or eight percent, that's up for us to discuss, but if it's in policy, then we always have that as our, you know, our rainy day fund.
Yeah. Yeah, we had, uh, we had that, Lynn had an actual percentage that they wanted. Ritzville kind of said within a percentage, this is what we wanted to call it. One of the, one of the decisions which they made, um, and I, I think it was a really good decision at the time, was instead of addressing some of the facilities, he bought land. And so some of the land that he, we bought during that time, is this, this, you know, he bought pieces when they came available. And so that, that was a move that he made, it allowed us to build a high school here. And so I, yeah, I do, I do think, you know, you brought up, um, in the past about having a facilities use plan, or having some sort of rotation to where we're gonna say, now it's, you know, within these five years, we're gonna focus on updating the middle school. Yeah, it was past practice to kind of let things go back. And, um, you know, piece them together until they, they fell apart, and so I think that we can do better than that if we plan to have. You know, just, just like you do, um, in your personal life. You know, you save a little bit of money, either for your retirement, or in case your, your car goes, you know, your transmission goes out or, or whatever, and so that's, that's smart budgeting, um, and it, it's kind of common sense, but sometimes that isn't as common as what we want.
I remember looking back at the high school. And I know Napton had, at the time, my wife worked there, they had cameras and everything, when we got our first, like, degree in high school. Things were let go for years in anticipation of this building, and it didn't happen.
So, so Becky Moore, who's, um, under Craig, it texted me, she said, it said it's over five hundred thousand. She said it's, um, Craig's confirming it, but it, it looks as if the enrollment stabilization is gonna be nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars, so, so close to a million. Yeah. But Jason is, you had said that's a one-time, one-time booster, and so we won't be able to address ongoing costs, so.
Any more comments about the resolution?
What are the restrictions on that, I mean, you can use it for curriculum, you can use it to upgrade and repair the stadiums, it's the track, I mean, but I think we can't spend it on.
I can find out. Yeah, it, it's, it's very sol, it's seldom the case where they, would, outside of VEA, that they just say, go ahead and spend it on whatever. Even the, the CARES Act or what we call S R dollars had restrictions on them, and so, um, learning recovery, they said HVAC systems because of COVID, and so that's where the idea came about, that like, you could actually use those S R funds to go into Whitstrand and then, um, backfill some of it, so you have bond monies, you can do projects with. I'll, I'll check the parameters and, um, bring that back to the board, and once we know, if it can be spent on capital projects, we can put it there, um, or, you know, we can choose to put a portion of it there, however much the board would like to see.
Anything else? And we are done with our agenda, future meetings, Wednesday, the eleventh, uh, regular meeting, and then, study session on the eighteenth, right here. And then we have one, uh, also on the eighteen, correct? Yes, and that, that one starts at six, and the next regular meeting will be the twenty-fifth.